The July 21st, 2021 Board Meeting to Order and remind everyone to please mute your audio when not speaking, as well as state your name prior to making a comment or a motion and second for an action item. Thank you. All right, I'll ask each Commissioner to please respond with a "here" when I call out your name. Commissioner Bagnell?
All right, muted, I'm here.
Commissioner Doan?
I'm here too.
And Commissioner Duggan?
Here.
And Commissioner Schmidt?
Here.
Fantastic, thank you. All right, next we'll have the reports by the CEO and management staff. Tom?
All right, well, thank you, President Sanders, Commissioners, good evening. I'm going to have some additional ones here tonight, not slides but points that are some late breaking news that I'll add here at the end. But on Portland Cryptosporidium results for the month of June 2021, the Portland Water Bureau reported one cryptosporidium osis detection in water samples collected from the Bull Run headworks. Complete results of Portland's cryptosporidium monitoring are posted on the city's website at their, if you go to their website, you can follow that link. Water supply update. As you are aware, the governor recently issued an executive order encouraging all Oregonians to use water wisely. This order also restricts water use at state-owned properties. While parts of Oregon are facing severe drought conditions and our sympathies go out to those communities feeling the worst impacts from the drought, this order does not impact TBWD. Our current water suppliers are in good shape. This is, our current water supplies are in good shape. This is the expected trend through the summer and remaining peak demand season as well. The Portland Water Bureau has reported that they are not anticipating any water supply shortages this year based on available supplies, customer demands, and anticipated weather patterns. As part of this, I would like to mention some late-breaking news here that we deployed our trailer rig, pump trailer rig, down to Climas Falls, where they are in a severe shortage situation and are having, I guess, some problems with their wells. And this is allowing them to interconnect some supplies so that they can continue to deliver water to their citizens. In addition, we delivered some chlorine to Hermiston to help them keep up and running. So we have been reaching out to our partners in the state to help them out. And so we are looking beyond our own boundaries to make sure that we are working together to keep people in water supply through these issues. If you have any questions on the chlorine supply or what we deployed down to Climas Falls, Chief Engineer Pack is here and she can also respond to any questions if you have any. I'll continue on. So TBWD's Barney Reservoir Supply with the Joint Water Commission is also in good shape. No supply shortages are expected either. Last year, we are continuing to use our aquifer storage, last, we are continuing to use our aquifer storage and recovery supply as well to meet demands, which helps offset usage of our primary Portland and JWC sources throughout the season. As usual, we will continue to promote wise water use this time of year to our customers and through TBWD's daily operations in order to maintain our careful stewardship of these important resources. Taken as a whole, TBWD's situation further supports the direction we have taken with the development of the Willamette Water Supply System. Having multiple high-quality water sources available will continue to make sure TBWD can meet its mission of providing safe, reliable water to the communities we serve. As always, we will continue to monitor the situation and keep the board updated should any changes to this situation occur. So before I move on to the Safety Minute and Department Report here, there's one other update that is also late-breaking that happened today. So we issued our LOI, our Letter of Interest, for WIFIA for $15 million. This is for, I'm sorry, our portion is 15 million, the total is 30. And this money is to help us address some of the CIP projects that we've got that we were postponing simply because we didn't have the financial resources to go after. If, by getting this loan, if we get it, then we're in a situation that we can actually expedite and get some of those projects done sooner where our comfort level's a little higher rather than postponing those off further into the future. So good news that we got that out there and we're going to be also working our connections here at the federal level to help us get this through and get this WIFIA loan in addition to our other WIFIA loan. So with that, unless there's any questions for me, I'm going to turn this over to Clark Balfour, our General Counsel, where he's going to present the Safety Minute and Department Report this evening.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks, everybody. Good to see you again. I will now do the Safety Minute. I feel like I've already missed it because, Paul, if you'll advance to the Safety Minute, we'll see that I chose summer fire safety, but had I known from the earlier discussion that we were having extreme watersports, I would have found something there that shows people engaging in epic fails for those events. So anyway, missed opportunity. Okay, Paul, let's go ahead. All right, so I'm going to talk about three things tonight. Grilling fire safety, something we do a lot of at this time of year. You know, when you go to like the fire websites and that sort of thing, these are, these things just keep coming up, you know? Keep your grill at least three feet from siding, deck rails, all those things that could catch on fire, including children and pets. I thought that was a nice touch. You know, things like wear short sleeves or roll them up. I mean, there are examples out there where people catch things. And in part, that coupled with not using like long-handled tools and those sorts of things. Remember, don't walk away from fires when they're lit. That's just not a good plan. And, you know, clean your grill after each use to remove grease which can start a fire. The statistics for Twolton Valley Fire, as far as grease fires starting from these things, are, it's a common thing that turns up. And then finally, this is also a favorite, the make sure you place your coals or whatever it is in a metal can with the lid closed once they've cooled off. The photo, I really like this photo because you can see the fire. It's a real fire. And if you look on the left side, you actually see adults and children fleeing the scene. So I think this was not some put-up deal. This was the real deal. Okay, Paul, let's go to the next one. So, and here's the other popular thing now, right? They sell these little backyard fire pits to sit around at night and have a nice time and they're great, but it's the same thing as the grill. So place them away from your house and anything that can burn. And you can see from the graphic below, there's a 10-foot recommendation. Keep that metal screen over to keep sparks from floating out. Put the fire out when you leave the backyard. Don't leave it unattended. And, you know, this is really true. If you have little kids around, watch out because those things get hot. So be careful. Once again, the photo on the right side, I mean, that's real time too, right? This guy is fleeing the scene. And so I thought, you know, this is perfect. I mean, it's both hands up. I mean, he's getting good arm, leg, he's probably lifting his legs high. And this would be a good Olympic training photo right here because he's exhibiting good form. Okay, let's go to the next one, Paul. And then campfire safety. So this one has always been a favorite because, you know, I can remember being in the fourth grade and we had a big presentation on campfire safety and I got my little pin from Smokey the Bear saying, "I am helping Smokey." And I wish I could find it, but I can't. I would have worn it tonight. But in any event, yeah, so build your campfire in a safe place, not near anything that can burn. Keep plenty of water and a shovel around, you know, sand, dirt in a bucket to douse the fire when you're done and then stir it and douse it again. I can remember Smokey telling us that in school, you know, to do that stir it and douse it again thing. And then never leave them unattended. So, Paul, you can flip to the next one. And I, because I thought of Smokey, I decided I had to use an old photo of him. And then, and now I'm going to apologize because when I, when I think about, you know, going through these things, they all seem so elemental and so basic. And then you see the photo on the right, which actually is a label on a pizza box to tell you, "Open the box before you eat the pizza." And this fire is kind of like that, right? And if we're, it, it was just disturbing and kind of depressing. And I thought, if we have to have a label like this on a pizza box, then, you know, we really have bigger problems as a society. So there you go. That concludes my safety moment. Okay, and I will roll into the Legal Department Report if that's okay? So Paul will roll the tape here. So some of these things are actually continuing from the last time that I presented to you, oh gosh, I think back in January or February. So we have, we have ongoing things all the time. CIS has issues that come up from time to time that we need some guidance on. We are doing a valve replacement project right now for some defective valves. We worked out a deal with the manufacturer of the valves to, for them to hire a reputable contractor to go in and replace some defective valves that they supplied to us. And so that work is ongoing under Kerry's supervision. And also under Kerry's supervision, we've got various construction projects going on which require day-to-day advice on things like pay requests and schedule and whether they've got the appropriate permits and those kinds of contract management issues. So those things are always going on for me and the department. Debbie Carper, this is kind of amazing. I mean, I say it's amazing and yet I'm not surprised either. Every so often, we uncover through our records management program that Debbie administers, real estate title issues. And so we found three or four deeds out there that are still in the name of some of the old districts, I mean, old, old districts that were absorbed into either Wolf Creek or Metzger prior to Twolton Valley. So, you know, we were going through those and we're getting the titles changed over to the name of Twolton Valley. It's really housekeeping as much as anything. And we haven't been impacted because the statutes say that when you have a merger or consolidation of districts, that by operation of law, by statutory edict essentially, those title transfer matters are automatic. So it would be recognized if we went to convey title later that we would have to do so. But we're trying to clean those things up and so it's, it's, it's actually interesting historical reading. We have names from little districts from a long, long time ago that were absorbed into either Wolf Creek or Metzger and now part of Twolton Valley. It's, so it's a stroll down memory lane in a way. We are working on a intertie with the City of Beaverton up in the Cooper Mountain area to connect our reservoir that you see there in the photo at 189th, I think, in Kemmer, with the new reservoirs that Beaverton is building just down the road and to have a pipeline in place there where we can push water back and forth between the systems during planned shutdowns and for emergency purposes. And then that's going to enable us to do some other system work up in the Cooper Mountain area to improve our delivery capabilities. So we're, we're pretty happy about that. That's over for Beaverton Review right now. There's always the ongoing WWSS support primarily in the real estate side of things as we're going through these acquisitions. We just completed a legislative session, which I'll talk about that in a minute. And then there's always ongoing COVID issues. So let's roll to the next topic. So I'm going to run through just a couple of bills that we were watching for the legislature. One is change of use in reservoirs. That's House Bill 3103. This was a bill that we supported. This is a bill that is important to us for the Willamette reallocation process. It's going to help provide us extra flexibility in the use of our water rights on the Willamette. And so there was, there was a lot of competing interests involved with this. Joel Carey was the tip of the spear on that for us and we were able to get that through. So this is going to enable the Water Resources Department now to change the use characterization for water in the 13 core reservoirs that make up part of the Willamette system. That in turn will allow the reallocation of the use of that water in our favor. So we're pretty happy about that. There was also a bill, House Bill 3040, on system development charges. That accomplishes a couple of things. Number one, the state agency, the Housing and Community Services Department, is going to do a study and report back to the legislature in the 23 session. We anticipate that they're going to hire, oh gosh, Echo Northwest, John Friggin' EC's outfit, right? To do a study, a comprehensive study of system development charges and see if there are changes that need to be made. So we need to be engaged watching that. But other than that, there were really no changes to the SDC statutes except for a couple of things. Number one, by January 1st of '22, so six months from now, we're going to need to have in place on our website a statement of our methodology and our capital improvement program so that the public can access that and see how it is that we compute our system development charges and what those charges are. So it's really not going to be a big deal for us. I mean, we, it's something that we'll be able to handle fairly quickly without a lot of effort or diversion from other staff efforts. But, you know, just keep in mind that, you know, transparency is a big thing and so we're going to have to be transparent in information available to the public. And it's always been available to the public, but we're just going to have to post it now on a link. But, you know, in a couple of years, we may have some more significant issues on this to consider. There was House Bill 2310, which was the use of plastic pipe, you know, to compel the use of plastic pipe. That died a miserable death, so we were pretty happy about that. Then, then we, there were some utility assistance bills, House Bill 3089. That, this one doesn't have a lot of specifics to it. I think the important thing is that for water and sewer providers, the legislature appropriated $15 million. And now the Housing and Community Services Department is going to figure out how to allocate that for, you know, customer relief. And so, you know, and there'll be rulemaking, but, you know, this is going to be a forward-looking process for us to be involved with to see how that money is allocated and hopefully some can come our way for the benefit of our customers. There is one public meetings bill of note, House Bill 2560. And that really is an outgrowth of COVID and the virtual meeting concepts that we've been working under for the last 16 months, I guess. But what it means is, is that by January 1st of '22, we're going to be required to provide a mechanism either by telephone, video, or virtually for the public to attend, the public to give testimony or to make comment, that sort of thing. Really nothing different than what we're doing now. But the fact is, is that under the, under the term of modernization, the legislature's moving toward much more flexibility in how we conduct meetings and the use of virtual things. So there may be some policy amendments that we need to come back to you on in terms of how we conduct meetings. But I think it's also going to mean more flexibility, hopefully more participation and flexibility for you as well as we go forward. So next will be, okay, we have a new state holiday, Juneteenth. So that's House Bill 2168, starting next year. Juneteenth will be recognized as a state holiday. What that means for us is consideration over the next few months of, you know, how the, how the board wants to look at Juneteenth as a holiday and then we also, do we also want to have floating holidays so that people can use dates for, for different things as well? So just keep in mind that there's going to be a conversation around that at your level and we'll be coming to you with some recommendations. This one, prevailing wage rate, Senate Bill 493, is probably a concern to all of us. I'm not sure exactly how much of a concern it's going to be. Maybe Dave or Kerry has some, has some more current information. But what it says essentially is that the prevailing wage rate on jobs is going to be the highest collective bargaining agreement in the area for that particular piece of work. And to the extent that a job is not identified in a collective bargaining agreement or there's no collective bargaining agreement, then BOLI, as usual, is going to set what that rate is. So, you know, we could see an increase in some of the rates that we have to pay in our construction contracts. And maybe we're already seeing it just because the economy's been so hot and, you know, workers are not really available. And so our contractors have already been paying at pretty high rates already. It may or may not make a difference, but it's something that we need to watch. Surplus lands, there was a, there were a couple of bills early on that talked about, you know, developing an inventory of surplus lands and that then those surplus lands would be available for folks that are in tough circumstances, home-wise. And maybe there'd be an opportunity for public lands to be used for houseless people, that sort of thing. House Bill 2918 does some of that, but, but not much. First thing to note is special districts like TBWD are exempt from that bill. So what House Bill 2918 says for everybody else is that they're required to come up with an inventory and submit it to the state on an annual basis for land, surplus lands held by a public entity within the urban growth boundary and zone residential. And from that, this inventory will be developed and perhaps those properties will be used for, you know, affordable housing or other relief efforts. We're exempt from those bills. But there are a couple of other things too, and that's House Bill 3124. So this probably affects the Park District more than it affects us. But where you have folks that maybe are illegally camping on your property, that sort of thing, if they're going to be moved, there are notice requirements and there's also requirements that for a 30-day period, you have to store belongings and give folks an opportunity to come back and get them. So as I said, that probably doesn't apply to the district because, you know, our lands are probably too remote, but it could. The Park District is more urban in nature in terms of their surplus properties and so that may be more of a problem for them. But the fact is that as soon as you call law enforcement to handle whatever the situation is, they're going to be subject to that kind of storage and waiting period. So, you know, we're, we're not necessarily directly involved, but we are indirectly involved if we engage law enforcement. Finally, the county right-of-way issue and fees, House Bill 3049, that did not pass. I think it'll come back at some point in the future, but for now, there's no change in the amount of fees that we may have to pay. Okay, Paul. Finally, we have some issues on reopening. It's, it says, Tom's communicated with you. You know, there's, there's just a lot of detail that comes back to reopening after some of the more restrictive COVID provisions. So we're dealing with working conditions, policies on working from home, how we deal from a customer service point of view, the past due accounts, and do we start reinstituting the shut-off programs? Actually, we have started. We have instituted the shut-off program, so those are going. And then finally, because we work with Clean Water Services on joint billing, there's been some coordination efforts there as well. So that seems to be proceeding apace, but it, there's, there's always bumps in the road. And so, and we manage to find them sometimes.
Sometimes I think we steer correctly.
Yeah, well, that could be. Okay, Paul, we can move on. So I'll leave you with questions. And then, you know, my, my Latin phrase of the day is probably more of the Vulgate than, than the Ecclesiastical, but the "Dum in visem rusus or curimus", which is roughly translated, "Until we meet again." Anyway, thanks, everybody. I'll take questions if you have them.
Thank you, Clark. Any Commissioners have questions for Clark Balfour?
No, I was just excited to hear him recite the Latin phrase. I did look it up to see what it might mean so I could see if he lied to us, but I can report, it was accurate.
Well, thank you. We, I guess we visit the same websites. How's that?
Okay, then. Next, we will have the report of meetings attended. So the Commissioners will now report on meetings attended and we will begin alphabetically with Commissioner Bagnell.
I haven't been first in like a long time.
I thought you would like that. I figured that's like, yeah, she's going to, she's going to take that.
When I, when I got married, I went from steel smith to Bagnell and like vaulted from the end of the alphabet to the beginning. So this is, this is sort of nice. This is one of those things. So my meetings, the first one I have to report is the 17th of June. I met with the district recorder to take the oath of office for this term and to do some document signing. And then on the 24th of June, I attended the Westside Economic Alliance Mayor's Forum. And that, you know, that's always a real interesting meeting. And this time, one of the things that I found particularly interesting is how many small and large towns are getting ARPA funding. And they're having an interesting time figuring out how to disperse those funds. But it, as always, like I said, fraught with interest. On the 9th of July, I attended the Joint Water Commission meeting and it was so long, I could hardly believe it. We talked about the curtailment plan. We talked about chlorine prices. We talked about the plant updates. It was, it was a long meeting. And then, of course, I have tonight's Board Meeting with District Business.
Thank you. Commissioner Doan? Jim, are you still with us?
No, I'm here. I had to unmute myself. I don't know why. This is not, computers always have hated me and tonight they're just out in force. Okay, today's regular meeting. I met yesterday with Tom Hipman to discuss some issues with Beaverton. And then the Barney Joint Operating Commission and the JWC. On the 9th and on the 28th, a pre-meeting on the Barney Joint Commission and JWC. That's it, only four.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Doan. Commissioner Duggan?
Well, I have a pretty short report. On the 29th, I had my drive-by swearing-in ceremony where Debbie Carper administered the oath of office for my new term. On the 1st of July was the WWSS Board Meeting. On the 12th of July, I met with Paul and Todd Sanders regarding our agenda planning for this evening and then tonight's meeting. And so that's it for the last month for me.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes, I also, Debbie came over and swore me in for my new Yes, I also, Debbie came over and swore me in for my new term. And I also attended the Joint Water Commission meeting and tonight's meeting, and that's all.
Righto. Have to say goodbye to my teenager. Okay, last but not least is myself. Again, on the 12th of this month, we met with Commissioner Duggan, myself, and Paul Matthews to go over the agenda for tonight's meeting. And then I have tonight's meeting, our monthly board meeting. All right. So that being it for the reports of meeting attended, next is the topics to be raised by commissioners. Do we have any topics to be raised by the commissioners at this time? All right. Not hearing anything, we'll move on to public comment, where public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items, the consent agenda, and matters not on the agenda. Additional public comment will be invited on agenda items as they are presented. Do we have any persons who would like to comment? I'm counting to eight on my fingers, so I think we're good. All right. That moves us right on to the consent agenda, where the consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board members may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items, which do not require discussion. Approval of the July 16th regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Oh, moved.
This is Jim Dome, second.
So I think we have Commissioner Bagnell has moved, and Jim Dome is second. I'll ask Debbie, our district recorder, to please provide the rule call vote.
Commissioner Bagnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dome?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt? Commissioner Schmidt, if you did respond, you are muted.
Maybe he can chat.
Actually, it looks like we lost him. So if we can wait a few minutes, hopefully he can reconnect.
And while we're waiting, let me apologize, this is Commissioner Bagnell, for not identifying myself when I made the motion. I, I, I confess to taking rampant advantage of the fact of being the only woman on the board, so I assume you know it's me. Even, I don't say so.
We knew it was you, but I think it's needed to be said for the record because we can't see each other. And maybe we can see each other soon. It sounds like our staff is together in the conference room, is that right? It sounds like Paul and Tom and Clark are all, and Carrie are in the room together?
We are. We're all here.
Must feel good.
A regular party.
Yeah. It is, yeah, it's fun to look at people.
It's kind of nice.
Tom didn't bring us anything to eat.
Yeah, I failed at my EEO obligation, so make note of that.
Well, and it's fun to look at people without masks. That's really kind of neat.
So no cookie? Nobody got a cookie tonight?
No, well, see, the thing is, what they, they don't know is, when it's all said and done tonight, I was going to offer, you know, anything but a Coors beer. And, and we'll see if they take him, take me up on it.
I sent him an email to see if he had any connection issues. I'll send him a text message, too, but you might want to continue with the meeting.
All right. Will we have to come back on this motion, Debbie, or are we allowed to move forward?
We've got a majority, so it's fine. Yeah, the consent agenda has been approved.
Okay, so the motion does pass. Very good. The next item is the business agenda for tonight, which is to consider adopting Resolution 08-21, a resolution establishing the water rate setting process for the 2021 through 2023 biennium. We will now have a staff report from Paul Matthews.
Oh, good evening, President Sanders and commissioners. The information we're going to present here tonight is information you've heard before, so I'll go through it fairly quickly. Two things that we want to talk about first is the financial plan and rate saving process. The other thing I've added, or is also part of the packet, is the presentation I typically offer you on the, where we stand with collections and our financial condition performance given COVID-19. So that's at the end, and we can skip over that unless you have questions. I didn't intend to travel through that part of the slide deck entirely. With that, do you want to review quickly the latest financial forecast, which is the financial plan that you adopted in May? Present the proposed water rate increases for November, November 21, that'd be this November, and November 2022. You might recall that the Rate Advisory Committee recommended that we adopt the biennium rate increases at once, so that's, that's what we're proposing again here. We'll provide an overview of the customer outreach plans that we have, and again, I'll answer any questions on the financial performance given our COVID-19 situation. So we are rounding the corner in our financial management process. You might remember, we presented financial strategies to the board, and you adopt those in, in March of this year. We did the budget, which you went through the budget committee process and adopted that in June, and you adopted the financial plan itself, actually, in May, the budget in June, and now we're talking about rates. And so we have the entire process of going through the rate process I'll talk about. And then we turn it over to people like Carrie, who delivers all the water, and Andrew and his team, who reads all the meters and that kind of stuff. So we're, we're kind of in the third quarter, if you will, of our efforts here on the financial side. You might remember when we did talk about the financial strategies, that we, that we do have some significant risks that we're seeing. And in fact, you know, they're becoming more present every day as we see what's happening in the market and the impact that may have on our capital plans. We've got a lot of, of risk just sitting out there. We've got a lot to construct, and a lot of bids need to be made, and a lot of contractors that have to give those bids, and we'll just need to see where we stand. So we are experiencing those risks, and we're, and we're watching them. When we presented our financial strategies to you, the overall approach that you adopted was to build financial capacity now. And, and that means that we're going to be increasing our revenues now to help us work through some of the risks that are out there. So that's the overall approach, build financial capacity now, adopt rates, and it provides the financial resources that we need in advance. We're not going to wait till the last minute and have a very unplanned and large rate increase that's disruptive to our financial situation as well as to the board itself, so our customers, rather. We want to enhance the Customer Emergency Assistance Program because we know that there will be customers adversely affected by the planned rate increases. Most of our customers, as you see as I get into the rates that we're talking about, this won't be a huge sacrifice for them. But for some of our customers, they're having difficulties paying their water bills as they are now even without the increase. So through the budget process, you provide additional resources that allow us to enhance our Customer Emergency Assistance Program to help those customers. And we're going to continue to pursue federal and state assistance. You heard Clark talk earlier about some of the financial assistance that's going through the state legislature, the WFI loan that, that we submitted on today, the letter of interest on as well as grants, and the rest of the efforts that we're doing with the legislative process that Thomas briefed you on in the past. So all those things are, we're trying to do to manage our cost as best that we can. But having said that, and you know well, that we have a large capital, a large capital expenditures ahead of us, and this is largely for the water supply system. You've seen this over the years, this large mountain of capital outlay, and it just keeps coming at us. And now we're seeing that in this biennium, in fact, that's when those dollars are going to be spent. The gray area in this, in this chart is the in-district CIP, and that includes a lot of the projects that are done out of an engineering group to prepare us for the limit, but also just the continued capital expenditures that we need to make to keep the district's customers well-served. The blue area that you see there is the WWSP projects, and that has dominated us, and we need to work through that period of time. And you can see that once that large capital expenditure program is passed us, that we end up in a more, a more steady capital expenditure in the future. So that is really the challenge that, that we're facing. And to do that, we are looking to use long-term debt. These capital assets that we're putting in place, this infrastructure, literally, some of this stuff is 100-plus-year assets. And we are going to use a combination of our WFI debt, which is showed in the hatch color, as well as some bond proceeds from traditional revenue bonds to fund that. Now, this will depend on, for example, the LOI that we submitted for WFI. It is possible that we will get additional WFI money, and we'll be able to use that in place of revenue bonds and to create even more financial flexibility that'll serve our customers well. But we're doing everything we can by using a responsible amount of debt, not an irresponsible amount, and using other programs to keep these costs down. So as I like to say, debt is a great tool, but a bad habit, and we're monitoring these things closely to get the right mix. And it's consistent with the strategy that you all have put us on. So where are we talking about moving? The district has fixed charges and volume charges. We'll start with the volume charges first. Given the financial plan that we adopted back in May, it contemplated nine-and-a-half percent rate increases. And so what you see here are the Block 1 and Block 2 rates incorporate those rate increases again in November 21 and November 22. So it'll be over two steps for those rate increases. The fixed charges will similarly go up at, at that nine-and-a-half percent rate. Now, in this two-year period, the biennium, you might also remember that the budget included resources to do a rate study. We do that about every five years. It's been about five years, and we'll do that again as part of this. And we'll look at, at the adequacy of our fixed charges and, given our fixed cost, and to see if, if we shouldn't be increasing those faster than the volume rates. You might remember that the last rate study we did, where we looked at that, we did, in fact, increase our fixed charges faster than the volume charges. We phased it in over, I believe it was a three-year period to get those fixed charges up. Again, we still have quite a distance between our fixed cost and our fixed revenue, and that will be a subject of the rate stay as well as affordability for some of our customers. So what does that do to our typical customer? Presented here graphically is the impact on our typical customer from the current and then the November 21 and the November 22. The gray area is the, is the fixed charge, and the blue area is the, the volume charge that those customers have. This is for the typical customer using seven CCF per month. Our customers are generally built on a bi-monthly basis, so that'd be 14 CCF over a two-month period, and the same typical customer that we presented to the board and the public in the past. Looking at that same information in tabular form, which is my preferred way of seeing numbers, I like tables versus graphs, but we do it both ways here, you can see that that's a bit over a $5 increase in this November, and a bit under a $6 increase in November of 2022. We've talked about TBWD's ascent up this chart, of where we are relative to our neighbors. And, and I've told you in the past, I'm not a fan of this chart because it tends to send the wrong signal that, that keeping your rates low, which means you're either putting yourself in financial, financial risk, or you're not reinvesting your infrastructure, seems to be rewarded. I don't believe that's the case. And, and we've talked about this before. TBWD is going to rise up in this, in this list, and we'll continue to invest in our system, and then at some point, we'll drop down. And it wasn't all that long ago that the top of the list was Wilsonville about 20 years ago, when they built their new water treatment plant, they were at the top of the list, and now they are near the bottom. And so we can see ourselves cycling through this over the next 20 years, but we will see ourselves move up this, this chart as we continue to invest in the supply program. So our processes we go forward. If we want to adjust water rates consistent with our financial plan or otherwise, there are some legal requirements that we have. The first is to provide notice to our customers. Don't have to send a postcard, per se, but there are a couple of different mechanisms that we can use to provide notice to our customers that tells them that we are having a public hearing to adjust water rates. It tells them when that public hearing is going to be held, and it needs to tell them where the public hearing is going to be held. We typically do that in a postcard because it's the cheapest, most effective way of providing that information to our customers. The other requirement is that we actually hold a public hearing, that you take action by resolution. But as a best practice, we have found that conducting open houses can be helpful to our customers to understand what it is that we are, after all, spending their money on their behalf. What are we getting for their investment? So we use those open houses as an opportunity to do that. It's easier for our customers to provide comment to the board. We want to make sure that public comment is not an owner's process for them, and so we find the best practice, the easier we can do to provide public comment, the more public comment you'll get, and the higher quality that public comment will be. So we couple that best practice with our legal requirements, and we actually want to send out this postcard with information about the virtual open houses that we have, and how customers can provide that comment. And essentially, that's what we're going to do with the resolution that we have tonight, is provide staff direction so we can, so we can send out that notice. So what is our process that we've proposed? We're, as you probably heard, we have our Talk and Water series, and we're going to leverage our Talk and Water series to have virtual open houses. The first virtual open house will be on Wednesday, August 11. And I need to apologize, in the staff report that's in your packet, I indicated that would be a one-hour meeting from noon until 1:00 p.m. After talking over this with Andrew and Tom, we've decided that, that's better to have an hour and a half, 90 minutes of time to make sure we can address all the questions that customers have. So we'll plan on that from noon to 1:30, and then we'll have a repeat performance, again, virtual open house. For those people who work during the days, may want to catch it from 6:00 to 7:30. Then we'll have the August 18th regular meeting with you, where you'll actually open the public hearing, you'll receive public comment, and, but you won't actually be asked to take action that night. Just open the public hearing, take public comment. We'll then have a virtual open house on Saturday, August 21st, from 9:30 until 11:00, and we'll receive additional public comment. The resolution that you'll be considering tonight would then direct us to close the public comment period on August 25th at 4:00 p.m., so we can gather that public comment and provide it to you so that you can take action on adopting rates on September 15. Now, this may look familiar because this is essentially the same approach that we used two years ago, where we had open houses. The only difference is we didn't have virtual open houses, but we had two open houses in the evening and one on a Saturday that was in the morning. And so essentially, we're following that same, same approach, except we're doing it in a virtual format. So Resolution 0821, it establishes August 18th as the date for the public hearing. That allows us to provide notice. On that postcard that is described, it authorizes management to mail those notices and direct staff to conduct the virtual open houses, following the guidelines that I just provided, so we can provide that notice on, on the postcard. It also provides a public comment period, closes on August 25th, 2001, at 4:00 p.m. So staff can't do that. That's actually a board prerogative to determine when they want to take public comment, and this is your opportunity to set that so that we can work with the public to receive those comments. comments and know that shut off period of when those public comments need to be received. So with that, I ask answering general questions, and I do have a recommendation.
This is Commissioner Bagnall, and this is not a question, just more a comment. I will be curious and interested to hear, to see how those virtual meetings go because the last time we went through this two years ago, when we had the actual live open houses, one of the things I found very valuable is the one, the two I attended were having those stations where people didn't have to ask their questions in front of the whole group. They could come up to one of us and say, well, what about this? And we could talk to them one on one. And that that was a really useful and insightful process. So I'll be curious to see how the how the virtual model works.
Yeah, and Commissioner Bagnall, your, my concerns are there as well. And there may be some technical ways that we can have breakout rooms. I found it really helpful that people could actually talk to Water Supply Program Director Craska, and you know, he always is able to answer questions in a way that is very helpful for people to understand why it is we're undertaking this really ambitious capital project that's going to serve our citizens for more than 100 years. This is multi generational project, and it'd be great if we could find a way to let people talk in smaller groups where there's less tendency to kind of grandstand.
Yeah, and I, I mean, from from my own perspective, that that's, I had two people approach me and just flat out say, how do you, how do you excuse giving the staff a raise when you're charging us so much and you're raising rates so high? And I was able to show them in the budget, look here, look right here, here's what personal services is. You could, you could take this number down to zero, and it wouldn't move the needle. This isn't the number that's driving the rate increase. And and that was, that was pretty powerful.
Tom, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, so one of the things that we could look at doing with, you can do it with, I think, Microsoft Teams, I know you can do it with Zoom and other, but do breakouts. And what we could do is essentially do five breakouts and where it's, you, it would randomly assign people, but each commissioner would get a group of people that they could hear directly. You could hear those concerns, and then we we would have a staff member be part of each one of those breakouts and then come back as a whole, and we can share what was heard in the in those, in those breakouts, and then address them there. So if there's interest in doing that, we could, we could look at doing that.
Well, we, so we were going to look at at technology and how we could support that because, as Commissioner Bagnall said, that that was very, very helpful. The the thing that we're going to miss is just the ability for us to say to an individual, let me get you with Steve Craska, he can answer your question and and connect those things.
Well, that's what I was thinking, if we have a staff member that's with the commissioner on each breakout, then those get recorded. When we come back as a whole, then any question where somebody thought, hey, it'd be good if so and so answered this directly, we could direct those questions so that they could get answered in front of everybody. People don't feel like they're called out in front of everybody.
So Andrew does have some stuff, we'll talk about that, yeah, because I think, and we'll get realigned with make sure we're doing that the way that that you're describing.
But I guess I'm curious to know, are the commissioners, are you interested, I, it clearly sounds like Commissioner Bagnall is, are the rest of the commissioners interested in something like that, that provides a little more of an intimate structure?
This is Commissioner Doan. It's hard to refer to yourself in the third person. I would be interested in that.
This is Commissioner Duggan. I think everything that was being discussed right now about breakout room and bringing questions back to the larger group, it sounds, sounds perfect with the caveat that we know that things may not work 100% virtually, as we've all experienced in the last year. But I think as long as that that effort is made, I think it would be excellent PR, even if, even if there might be hiccups along the way. So I, I think that that would be the best way to handle it. And who knows, we may find that that this might be a better way of of soliciting those comments than the open houses that we had in person two years ago.
Yeah, this is Dick. I concur. I, I agree wholeheartedly.
Yeah, and this is Todd Sanders. Go ahead, Bernice.
I thank you. I, I just, I really appreciate that because I think the the single most important thing that we can do for our customers is to let them know they have been heard. And when they get to question us individually, they know they've been heard.
So, so what we can do is bring this back to you at the work, the next work session, and we can even see if we can't do a demo of it there so that maybe we could show how it would work and, and, you know, get some, if you haven't participated in those kind of breakout things, we can show it and give everybody a flavor of it before we actually go do it.
This is a good plan.
This is Jim Doan. I just want to emphasize the fact that we're getting more and more inclusive. You know, people don't have to show up, they, they just can talk to us. I'd like to see our board meetings go the same way, where people can, can be participant without having to come physically to our place. And I think that's really a, a step in the right direction for inclusiveness.
So if I, I could, just, just to let Commissioner Doan know and the rest of the commissioners, on August 3rd, we're actually going to have a presentation to the board on that very issue about board meetings being able to attend in in a new fashion that we're, much like we're talking about now. So, and what, what we need to do to make that work, but that is, that is the road we're on.
Paul, do you want to continue?
Well, I guess our recommendation is the board approve or adopt Resolution 0821, and then I'll go over the next steps, President Sanders, and then ask if you want me to go through the rest of the slide deck on the COVID response. So we're, I guess, ready for the question.
All righty. So I'm wondering, do we have a motion in a second to adopt Resolution 08-21, a resolution establishing the water rate setting process for the 2021 through 23 biennium?
This is Commissioner Duggan, so moved.
This is Commissioner Schmidt, I'll a second.
All right, I'll ask our district recorder to provide the roll call, please.
Commissioner Bagnall?
Yes.
Commissioner Doan?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Sounds like the motion passes. Paul, you had said you had some additional slides that you wanted to share this evening?
You bet, just a couple more here. And so first of all, given the resolution passed, we'll, our next steps will mail out the postcards to customers. We'll include a copy of that in the Thursday memo like we've done in the past so that you'll, you'll see that, but expect it in the July, August timeframe, depending on the production and printing processes. We'll conduct the virtual open houses, we'll hold the public hearing in August, receive public comment, and we'll adopt the new rates in September. And we just added one more to our next step, which is in, at the August 3rd work session, we'll talk about how we'll conduct the virtual open house from a technical standpoint. With that, I wasn't going to go through this entire slide deck, but I do want to provide an opportunity for the board to ask any questions. We included this in the packet that went out. One minor revision is we got the updated GIS heat map. The one that you saw in your board packet would have been from the Tuesday before last and Tuesday afternoon, on Tuesday afternoons, I get the new one, I include it in the, in this presentation. But otherwise, any questions that you have about the update on the financial performance given our COVID-19 situation? If not, I will pass the baton on to the next agenda item.
Do commissioners have any questions? I get to eight on my fingers. Without anybody asking questions, we will move on. All right, we will now have an informational presentation on the lead service line inventory requirement under the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency's lead and copper rule revisions. This is going to be a presentation by our staff report by Jewel Carey. And if you're familiar with this, this is a, this is going to be interesting over the next decade.
That's an excellent way to put, put it, President Sanders, so thank you. Yeah, good evening, President Sanders, board members. Tonight's presentation will be an update for the lead service line inventory. You might notice something too tonight, so it's a hard act to follow for, always a hard act to follow, Mr. Matthews. So my, my trick up my sleeve tonight is I'm, you may or may not have seen this, but this is actually the new PowerPoint template for TVWD. So we have some nice new visuals in here to sort of help complement the update for tonight. So with that, let's get started. So quick presentation outline for tonight. Number one, we're just going to do a really quick recap of the, of the lead and copper rule revisions or the LCRR. We're going to talk just a little bit about the current project elements that we have in play right now. We're going to talk about the project elements in development. These are items that we're going to be working on through the remainder of 2021, the quarter three and quarter four. And then we'll end on some board engagement, just our project goals and our roadmap to compliance for you, for your awareness, for updates as we get through this, this effort. So quick LCRR recap. What's changing? Again, why are we starting this effort now? Well, the first big thing to to point out right now is that the LCRR requires water systems to develop a lead service line inventory or LSL inventory, or to demonstrate the absence of lead service lines within three years of final rule publication. That date is effectively October 16th, 2024 right now. I'd show you timeline, it's, there's been all these changes. I think we came to you in March, talked to you about this. There's, there's been a change since then, which is reflected in this October 16th, 2024 revised compliance date. So we have a little over three years right now to, to do this work and to submit this information to the Oregon Health Authority, who will be the primacy agency. As a recap, a lead service line inventory must include both the public side, which is TVWD, and the private side, which is the customer side. That is one major element of the new rule that we discussed previously, really designed to make sure that there are no partial, partial lead service lines left out there for those utilities that do have lead service lines in abundance. So there's some compliance based categories to know about. We'll touch on these a little bit further. Lead service lines, that's sort of that one major category, which does include the subcategory of a partial galvanized line needing replacement. A little bit into the weeds here, but what that actually means is that that would have to be a galvanized service line that was downstream from a lead service line, either currently or historically. There's kind of a lot of investigative work that we would need to walk through, but that's one of those primary categories that we're, that we're going to be defining. Second category in this would be unknown, so just don't know yet, haven't been able to identify it. At that point, you know, that's what those categorization, that's what those fields look like. That's currently the status of, of the majority of TVWD's service lines, whether they're our side or the customer side as well. And then last but not least, non-led, once you're able to identify those through a variety of means, if they do fall in that category, whatever materials they are outside of, outside of lead, they are non-led for compliance. So it's obviously the category we want to try and get things to fall into based, based on the analysis and investigations we're going to be doing. So again, to recap, this would be submitted to the Oregon Health Authority by the above date, October 16th, 2024. So little disclaimer here, this is just the first stage of this rule. There is a whole host of other things about this rule. I know we mentioned it during the March board meeting. A whole lot of other things that fall out of this rule that we will be talking about and working towards implementation at and after that 2024 date. Things like finding fixed provisions, how do we deal with sampling with schools in relation to what the state's already doing within the rule? Sampling changes, public notification changes. So all that stuff is still there and exists. We're just going to set that on the table, set that on the side right now, and, and we are watching that, our team, our staff are keeping track of that, and we'll be coming back to you with more information as we get closer towards implementing those aspects of the rule to meet compliance. But again, first step is really addressing the lead service line inventory because that's kind of the big effort right now we need to wrap our heads around. So let's talk about the lead service line inventory, our current project elements in play right now. So we have started several things already. Chief among these that are really important is we've developed and refined a process in GIS and CityWorks for staff to collect both the front side and the backside material while performing, performing the meter condition assessments that support AMI or advanced metering infrastructure planning. So that effort started last year, as you'll recall, during COVID. It's a complimentary effort that we're working on, and it's actually played out relatively well so far in terms of having access to do this work. And we're utilizing what I would call an evidence based approach as the framework to gather data. What does that mean? Well, it means that, you know, when staff go out, we have this process set up to collect this data and to do these inspections. And can we, can we visually inspect the material either on the front side or the backside with a degree of confidence? So meaning when we've talked to staff, we've gone through this with our staff, we show them what this, what certain materials look like, and, you know, they're skilled in the field to know that as well. So if they're confident, they say, oh, yeah, I could see that in the backside of meter, no problem. We identify those materials, they're captured in our, in our database, and we feel like we're good to go. That said, if, if the answer is no, and it's just too hard, it's too hard to identify, then we have it categorized as not accessible, which would allow us to go back into the data set and prioritize these assessments, say, hey, we just, we couldn't out of the field, look at this, we need to go do more work to get some level of confidence that we were able to accurately identify what we saw out there in the field, which could trigger a whole, whole host of other things that we're talking about. So an example is for this, how we're kind of looking at this from the data set approach is multiple combinations of data are then paired to create some of these classifications. So the example we have up here tonight is that a non-led service on the TVWD side, which just for the record to point out, we do feel, you know, TVWD at this point doesn't have any known lead service lines. That said, that's why we're going to go through this process and do our best to really dig down and evaluate the data, anything that stands out as needing additional investigation. That said, non-led service line on the TVWD side plus a galvanized service line on the customer side, which may be a common occurrence in some of our other older areas, is a no replacement needed, that is considered a non-led, as a non-led service line. So just again, it gets into the weeds, but it's that whole galvanized ever being downstream or currently downstream of a lead service line is that thing that gets categorized as a full lead service line, largely because it's, in the history of using that lead service line, that lead could be deposited into the galvanized downstream. So there is a, there is a scientific valid reason for why those are categorized that way. So the key takeaway for tonight is we're thinking this through in a lot of detail right now to make sure that we can establish really good data principles for the entirety of the project. That's, that's really what we're trying to wrap our heads around to make sure that we're, we're doing our best right now so we don't have to go back and do a lot of corrections and do a lot of data cleanup, if you will. We want good data now. So one of the things we've done so far is prioritizing our inspections through that meter process based on the 1985 lead ban. You know, this is using the tools we have and the resources we have right now to create this defensible data set. So you'll notice on the map down there that it says tax lot, year built 1986 or newer. That's another example of one of those things that we're trying to look at. We know lead was banned in the middle of 1985 with some margin of buffer. We did some analysis and said, we We did some analysis and said, we feel confident that anything with a tax lot 1986 or newer with that margin of buffer in there gives us a degree of confidence that we can take those, set those aside, and categorize those as non-led, the service lines, the customer side. You know, we're confident even without that, that really in our region, lead was not being used for service lines. But this is a pretty clean cut way to say, listen, like, we know all this stuff, just does not need this level of additional investigation right now. So we're pairing that with what material does need this additional research. So what are the areas where you know that predate that 1986 timeframe? Again, knowing some of those clearly are probably not going to be in that category of even being at risk for lead, but at least it's a way to start categorizing the prioritization of work. Taken as a whole, what we get is at least a, a map that identifies the areas of priority. You know, it's a great example to see some places like Metzger where that section of our system has a lot more individualized location, service lines accounts mixed in with all the other things. So the takeaway for this is, A, this is still a work in progress. B, really what it's helping us do is prioritize areas, not just individual services. So when our staff are going out, our field customer service and meter staff, and doing their routine work, they wouldn't go jump house to house, service to service. It at least helps us identify these blocks and areas in our books, in our process that say, hey, our staff are out here doing this work already. We can prioritize this area and go through and just systematically, you know, again, the highest risk locations of our system to work through this. So it's a prioritization framework we're utilizing to really help get the project moving off the ground. So progress in this pilot effort to date, so far, what have we done? Well, we've done a little over 1,100 inspections at this point in time. It's really allowed us to refine the data collection process for, really what that means is what's working for field staff, what's working for office staff? You know, field staff need to be, be able to out there and understand what type of information they need to collect. And then on the backside of it, we need to be able to understand how we're categorizing, how we're bidding this data out, how we're going to look at it to, to put it together to meet compliance. So this has been a really helpful effort for all of us to kind of, you know, look at it from these two perspectives and find what works as a solution for all of us in the middle. So as you see the example here, we've developed a GIS dashboard to track progress. So it's categorizing the materials that we see and also the progress of the service lines that we need to identify. Of, of TVWD's 60,000 service lines, that analysis we've done so far puts us at about 30,000 individual service lines that we're prioritizing for inspection. So we'll talk about that more here in a minute. But again, that kind of gives you an idea of what this will help us be able to do in terms of prioritizing our work as we move forward. Just as a point of reference to date, most materials that we've identified, the staff have identified are the common things we expect to see. Copper, PEX, which is type of plastic, PVC, inductile iron. To date, no one has observed lead in this process. Okay, so lead service line inventory, so pending project elements, where are we going next from here? So these are the next steps, as I noted, that we'll be working on for the remainder of 2021. So we have a draft project development plan created to establish the framework for how we do this. Our objectives, who are the stakeholders, all those things as part of that. That'll really help us set the stage for continuing to develop this project plan further in these elements in here. This PDP also establishes our sub, sub-project teams. So our internal subject matter experts across the district that will begin to be engaged in this more and more as we work through this. Again, this is a draft that's going to go out for review outside of the engineering operations department here very soon. As part of this effort, we're going, going to continue evaluating our staffing needs for the field inspection process, among other things. You know, as I just noted, with around 30,000 service lines needing that evaluation within the three years, that's about 830 inspections we need to do per month. So that kind of gives you an idea like right there of like, what does that staffing need look like? If we wanted to meet that goal of having those materials identified within that three-year timeframe? How many resources do we need to do it? What's that translate to FTEs? That, the GIS dashboard is one of those tools that we'll be utilizing to help us sort of watch progress. Where are we at in that timeline? Are we making enough progress? What do we need to do? How's the project looking so we can adapt as we go? As you'll, as you'll remember as the board, we have allocated about $300,000 in this current budget to help with this process. That, that allocation will help, help, help us understand how to do public outreach and communications for target areas. We are expecting to use that for professional services, contract services. Again, example could be we might want to target certain areas where we know there's higher risk. You know, we're probably not going to be going to look in certain areas of the system, say like upper portion of the Bethany area where we know there's a lot more newer service connections. Those wouldn't necessarily be the prioritization we'd want to look at. So there could be targeted outreach we're going to look at doing for those areas where we might want to have customer engagement to talk about materials in their home to get more accurate information. It, it could and probably will include potential investigative support. What does that mean? That could be contract services to actually help us do this type of work, physical inspections of some type. However, we want to shape that out, again, going back to that resource need. How do these two things work together in order to meet that objective? Last but not least, data collection and management, that's going to be a big portion of this. When you look at the amount of information we need to collect and how we're going to have to submit it and how to make sure it's accurate, that will definitely be services we're going to need to help support, support that effort. So, and here comes the board engagement portion of this tonight, bringing these elements together for you. What do you need to be aware of? Where does, where does this, where does this land in front of you? So I just call this putting the piece of the puzzle together. As you can see, there's a lot of different elements of the project that we are slowly pulling together to try and make sure we have a strategic cohesive project plan. So some things on the left here, I really want to kind of just go through so you're clear about, about this from the public policy and compliance standpoint. The key elements of the LCR are for your awareness. Submitting the LSL, lead service line inventory is the regulatory requirement of the LCR. I just, I want to like underscore that right there. Submitting that information is what's required of that. Having all the materials identified by that October 2024 deadline is not the requirement. So we are, we have to submit this information. If you have materials categorized as unknown or lead service line, including the partial galvanizing replacement, that triggers the additional actions at that point. So we would have to do items like a publicly available lookup tool. So a GIS layer, if you will, open to the public that they could go look up information about their service line. If we have not been able to say, hey, we've demonstrated there are no lead service lines within our system at that point. We would have to do targeted notifications annually. So the moment that that timeframe kicks in, we would have to do outreach to those customers with unknown service lines or lead if we found them and didn't address them at the moment that that rule takes effect and then annually thereafter. And then last but definitely not least, if we didn't, if we don't have all this identified, we need to have development of what would be a lead service line replacement plan. So a project, a plan, how we're going to deal with these issues, how we're going to deal with the unknowns, how we're going to deal with replacing potential lead service lines in our system, including additional funding mechanisms to support, support that if there were service lines potentially on, on the customer side, lead service line. So, so moving over to the right-hand column over here, what are TVWD's goals? Well, ideally to have all the materials known and data ready by the compliance submission date, that is a goal. We would like to establish that as ability to work through that. Again, that said, we're still working through this project plan, and we need to, we need to, we need to wrap our heads even further around the timeline and the ability with the resources we have and are able to get to actually achieve this. So, and what the consequences again of still having some of this not completed by that timeline. So how would we get here? Again, bringing these elements together in a comprehensive and strategic project plan, which is in progress, by providing you, the board, regular updates during the next three years about the progress we're making, how the project plan is working, any adjustments, adaptations we've made. And last but certainly not least on here is engagement with OHA on expectations for these inventories, which is in progress. So we have a stakeholder group through some of our industry affiliations that are going to be working with OHA on the water utility side. So all the things we explained to you here tonight, we want to make sure that Oregon Health Authority knows the level of effort and work that it takes to do this so that we're, so that we're helping to the extent possible steer some of the process for the compliance and that data submission. So we don't want to get caught in a situation where there's some unreasonable expectation about what developing this inventory might look like from the state's perspective. So that's really that point of that early engagement that is in progress, that OHA is standing up a stakeholder work group to include water utilities, talk through all these complicated scenarios. So, so that's really it for tonight where we're at. Again, that is an interesting project, as President Sanders noted. You know, again, we're going to be working through this diligently and really trying to dig our head, dig into the details from a district-wide effort of how we achieve this and how we keep working towards these goals. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or take any comments tonight.
Joel, this is, sorry. This, this is Jim Don. Where are we, where are we ultimately going with the backside pipe? If it's galvanized, are we going to require the customers to replace it?
No, Commissioner Don. So the only time that that would get triggered is if we discovered a lead service line preceding that galvanized line, either currently or historically. So, you know, again, we, we don't think TVWD has any lead service lines. You know, I don't want to say never, but that's why we need to do this work. But largely, you know, that's probably an unlikely scenario. But again, it would have to have a galvanized service line on the customer side and a lead service line on the TVWD side, either currently or historically, that would, that would create that replacement for that line.
Okay. I mean, I can remember replacing the galvanized pipe at my house, maybe 25 years ago. We put in plastic with a, you know, with a, a wire to be able to find it. But before that, I got a magnesium anode from the gas company, and it extended the line in my house by about five years over those of my neighbors who, interestingly enough, they all failed the same weekend. And so, but I just was curious. I mean, it, it seems to me that there's a, an obvious carry-on here, and we need to figure out. Well, we'll just cross that bridge when we come to it. Thank you, thank you for your answer.
Yeah, and just to follow up, Commissioner Don, you know, part of this, part of this, we're going back to one of those points would be there is this, this public education component of this that we'll need to engage with too. So just to make sure people understand that when we're communicating about this, if we have to do additional work, they understand. Because it is, it is kind of complicated when you get into those nuances of what creates a needed replacement for a line, so.
And I was. Are we, oh, I need to mute. I was just going to mention that, and Joel did mention also that as the program gets developed, how the financing for the backside, should it need to be replaced? We're going to have to figure that out. It's not something that we, I mean, the EPA has made it pretty clear that we're not going to be able to just say, Mr. Property Owner, go and fix it. So that would be one of those things that we would come to the board to talk about, you know, the process for, or options for making that happen. That makes sense, Commissioner Don.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Bagno, did you have a question as well?
No, sorry. I was just messing with my little icons here. I was trying to figure out how to do the, the clapping ones, because Joel did such a good job on the presentation, and I couldn't figure it out.
Me either. Thank you.
Commissioner Duggan, you have a question?
Did the unmute? Well, I got my hand down. Joel, got a quick question for you. I know that there's been a lot of work done looking at the copper private side that might have used lead solder. Could there be any instance where there would be lead solder used on the district side on the service line? I, I'm, I'm just concerned that there might have been construction, construction practices that may or may not have been up to snuff in the seventies or, or, or earlier, maybe even into the eighties, where theoretically there might be some lead solder on a copper service line on the district side? Or comment just how lead, lead solder plays into what is going forward on.
Yeah, Commissioner Duggan, great question. So that is not one of the elements of the rule in terms of meeting compliance or quote, lead service lines. So things that are excluded from this are things exactly like that. So what they, what they call it in the rule, and I'll tell you why in a minute here, but it's, it's lead componentry of that degree in type. So some types of fittings and fixtures, a common one that was used in parts of the region, although TVWD has never seen it, would be lead goosenecks. So even that in and of itself isn't part of what's quote, considered a lead service line. The reason being in the rule and the public health reason why is because what they're really after are these large, large quantities, if you will, of lead, which is a service line, which is the surface to volume ratio. So those are the main drivers for lead exposure, less so something, something like lead soldering on a service line. That said, as you know, you know, TVWD is looking in some of our, our WIFIA loan and, and the project we're putting together is, is replacement of some of the older pipe mains with, with some of that componentry, whether it's, you know, the type of lead that was in the joints, things of that nature. So we are actively looking at those things anyway. But at least within terms of the rule, that's not something that, that gets categorized, largely because the public health risks are not the same as a, as a full lead or partial lead service line.
That's good to know, because I, I know that there are quite a few lines where they're old cast iron lines that, that use lead packing. But I'm glad, glad to hear that that's being looked at, but it's not part of the, the main push here for, for pipe material itself.
And, and this is Kerry Pack again, and I'll just add that both in our CIP as well as the WIFIA loan LOI that we just submitted, we have significant amount of CIP projects planned for those particular areas. Areas with cast iron, pipes with lead joints that we know about. And it, you know, we're doing it for a couple of reasons. One of them is potential water quality issues, but really we're doing it under the, under the umbrella of seismic resiliency, because those cast irons are obviously not as, they're not as seismically reliant. So we're working on that from, you know, multiple angles, I guess. And we're hoping to get all of the lead out of our system, even if it's minor kind of presence in our system right now. And I think we're going to do it, our plan right now is to have, try to get all of that done by 2030 timeframe.
Excellent. Thank you.
Joel, maybe this is the last question. This is Todd Sanders. I can certainly look it up. Does AWWA have a website that's providing any guidance right now? Just from my self-knowledge?
Yeah, Commissioner, President Sanders, if you want us to email you some information for a link to that, they are providing guidance on what to do. One of the guidance they're giving everybody is, don't wait, start the lead service line inventory projects now. And ironically, they keep, you know, and a lot of us who've been coordinating, actually frankly, across the Pacific Northwest, we've gotten some stakeholder groups together from Oregon and Washington. And, you know, one thing AWWA has been really clear about is this is a really big effort for a lot of utilities of, of our size. So they said, don't wait for your state regulators, just start doing this work now to the degree possible. So, but yeah, if you are interested, I can send you information via Debbie or myself or anybody else of AWWA resources.
Great, thank you. And this question comes with a, a statement with it, meaning that we neither hold you to it and anybody watching now or in the future realize that this is just a guess. Any idea of what you think the percentage of the customer base may be influenced by this decision?
So to recap that question, yeah. Influenced by the decision, you mean that may actually, we may actually discover a lead service line?
Correct.
Here we showed this little tiny finger thing, which is, yeah, miniscule. I mean, I will say this, because this is a public meeting and a setting. Most of us in the utilities in the Pacific Northwest know that we have never discovered a. the utilities in the Pacific Northwest know that we have never discovered a lead service line. Does that mean one or two or something doesn't exist? No, but with that amount of evidence from operations and engineering staff over decades, it's it's that.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, but we are going to do the process, and the good news is, is that part of doing inventory assessment will also help in other arenas too. So.
And I'm sorry for keep buttoning here, but one of the things that Joel didn't mention is that these rules really were started, obviously, from the concerns that we've experienced several years ago in Flint, Michigan. But it, you know, a lot of the rules that are included, the aspects of the rules really came from East Coast and out to the West Coast. So, you know, most of our areas in the West Coast, some of those cities that are older are of exception, but a lot of the West Coast is not necessarily heavily impacted by the rules that are that are in place right now. But nevertheless, we're going to go through the process to make sure that we stay in compliance with all of the EPA rules.
Well, thank you, Joel. Unless there are any other questions?
I'd just like to make a statement, which is that Portland went through in, when I was chief engineer in the the 1980s, and removed tens of thousands of lead services. And we think we got them all, but just as Joel says, there may be one or two still out there. But we spent several million dollars removing lead services. We fortunately had good records, and we knew where lead was used in installing a service, chances were that the service was lead. So anyway, having good records, we, in Portland, the records went back to work order number one in 1890. So anyway, some West Coast people have already taken care of this, but it's, I'm glad that TVWD is newer than the old services in Portland. I'm done.
Tom, did you have some remarks?
I did. So I, not with lead service lines, but just a reminder that we are going to have our staff appreciation event next Tuesday at 11:30. You know, I know you're all aware, but, you know, our our staff really stepped up to the plate over this last year and a half through this. It's been hard on staff, all of it. And what they've continued to accomplish and and get done and provide to our customers over this year and a half is really amazing, and we're very proud, and we want to recognize our staff for that. So that's next Tuesday at 11:30 for those of you that can make it, comfortable attending. And we're going to have, we're even going to have some entertainment. So trying to trying to have a little bit of, share some laughs with everybody and recognize all the staff for their efforts over the past year and a half.
I know I'll be there. All right. Not hearing anything else, there being no further business before the Board of Commissioners, this meeting is adjourned.